Orders of the day, public hearing, proposed water surcharge for industrial use. Get a motion to open a public hearing on that, please. So, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, the public hearing's open. Anybody have any comments on that? If not, we'll leave the public hearing open and move on. Approval of amendments, we need a motion to approve the September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one River Gold meeting. So, movement?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the October seventh, twenty twenty-one special board meeting. Motion for that one, please.
I'll make the motion.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of vouchers.
As audited, general fund, two hundred eighty-two thousand, eight hundred twenty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents. Water, ninety-one thousand, nine hundred fifty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Sewer, eighty-nine thousand, three hundred ninety-six dollars and forty-three cents. The capital fund, seven hundred eighty-five thousand, four hundred fifty-eight dollars and thirteen cents. All have been audited and I remove that they be approved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unfinished business, do you have anything on the five streets?
Yeah, I just wanted to know that the last, that last change order got approved by EFC recently. Uh, so the village should be receiving, uh, Highlander's, uh, last payback money soon, if you guys haven't already. Um, I just want to know, we're working with Municipal Solutions to get all the closeout documents finished up and wrapped up with EFC. So, that's all I got, five streets, gentlemen.
Phase two wastewater treatment plant upgrades. We got?
Yeah, so-
Notice to proceed on both of those, or just want to?
Yes, I have agreements and notice to proceed for both, uh, Empire Northeast and for American Process Group. Um, I'm still waiting on, on Mark to give me the final go-ahead on the insurance and bonds. Uh, but you guys can make a motion tonight, uh, contingent on his final review.
And, and ENI seems to be, uh, fine, and I should be able to sign off on that tomorrow. We're still waiting for one certificate from APG, but the other documentation again is, is compliant, so I think as soon as I get us that other certificate tomorrow, okay.
Do we have a motion to sign, a notice to proceed on both of them pending Mark's approval?
You might want to make a motion to sign the agreement first, does it matter, Mark, or?
What's that?
Does it matter, so, do they need separate motions for the, to sign the agreement and then to sign the notice to proceed?
Alright, so you want to, so your first motion should be to sign the agreements with the contractors. And second would be to sign the notice to proceed, to proceed, subject to my signing off on the bonds and insurance.
Do they need a separate?
I, I, it should be two separate motions, but you can include both contracts in one motion. So, first motion is to approve the contracts with ENI and APG.
So, vote?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we got Tim's motion to notice to proceed pending your-
I've signed off on the insurance and bonds, right?
Second on that one?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we got a proposed amendment, municipal solutions agreement. Basically what that is, everybody should have, hopefully got a copy. That's basically to do all the work with EFC on the phase two sewer project that's going to be starting here late October. And that's just, I need a motion to authorize me to sign that with them. So. You second on that one?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Right.
Opposed? Okay, you think new on the?
Yeah, sorry Joe, it's real quick, I'm back to phase two. I just wanted the board to know that, um, we do have another payout tonight for SC Spencer for some additional store materials. And, um, from what they're telling us, SC Spencer should be starting, uh, construction next week of the plant on some of the electrical conduits.
Is that the one for forty-four thousand?
Yes. And that's all I got for the wastewater. Um, on the groundwater projects, we just got comments, uh, this week from Department of Health. Um, we're meeting with them on Friday to kind of go over the comments, clarify some things with them. So, we hope to, uh, hope to wrap up their approvals with them quickly so we can get the project out of bid, uh, November summertime.
Any word from the D C?
I have not heard from them yet.
Street lighting LED conversion program. The contract was signed yesterday morning, we're all set to go. It's just a matter of when New York Power Authority gets the, their work crews up here. And I believe we had a phone conference call this week also, with Kaylin last week. Time flies.
Last week.
Yep. Uh, basically, they were in the process of getting things mobilized and, uh, we're hoping to see some lights going on, possibly here in November. That's where we are with that. Res zoning of industrial zone options, did you get a chance, you or Joe, to look at any of that over?
Well, we looked it over, but I thought you guys were going to try to come up with what your preferred approach was because of-
Did you come up with some different ones?
I haven't moved, I haven't done any of that.
Yeah, okay, so that's-
Thirty more days.
Okay, that's, uh, industrial water surcharges, we'll leave that open for a while, in case somebody else comes in. Move on to new business, got craft surcharges. August twenty twenty-one was zero. This is for the sewer, uh, September, it was two hundred and fifty dollars. Motion to- Move on to September ones anyway.
I'll make a motion for the September surcharges.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We got budget amendments. It's basically transferring funds, uh, pay the bills on a five-streets project. Need a motion to accept those budget amendments. It's on the back of the craft surcharges. Danielle, save the paper.
Aye.
Good.
I will make the motion, do you do want separate ones or?
Yeah, we need one for water and then one for sewer.
I will make the motion to accept the budget amendments for the water fund.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
And I will make a motion to accept the budget amendments for the sewer fund.
I'll second that idea.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now on the fire contracts, we can do a motion for all four of them, can't we, or do we have to do them separate?
I think you can do them as a group, uh, you've got all four of them here.
Mr. Austin isn't here, do you want to discuss that issue that we talked about earlier or not?
Well, there was, we don't have any particulars on it, but there was some talk that there might be some, possible some changes on Harrisburgs. Only because right now Lawville does fifty percent of it, Copenhagen does fifty percent. That might change, so if that changes, we might have to redo Harrisburgs.
But until the service areas have changed, it's good for now, right?
Just stuff I've heard through the rumor mill, so I don't really have-
Right, but if, but if the service area changes, then they'll be amended, right?
Okay.
I mean, there'll be a basis for amending if you have amended the service areas.
Yeah, basically, we'd be amending their contract.
Yeah.
So, basically, I need a motion to give me authorization to sign-
I'll make the-
Town of Lawville, Watson, Monty View, and Harrisburg's fire contract.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we also need a motion for me to sign a contract with Alvo Housing Authority for sweep the annual, uh, snow and salt. Whoops, wrong spot. Not supposed to be in there. It's- It's snow removal and sweeping in the spring. Not salt contract.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
All in favor, and, uh, anybody's got a copy of that? We did raise that, five percent, cover some of our fences that walk every year. And this, did anybody get a copy of the settlement and release agreement? Basically, what that's about, I don't think too many of the board are aware of what's been going on. This is over our grocery receipts tax. Certain gas companies that, you know, you're always getting these phone calls that will sell you the gas, will say electricity cheaper. Well, those companies don't seem to think they had to pay grocery receipts to the village of Lawville. And so, this has been ongoing for probably two years, maybe a little longer. We've been working with CompuTel, which has worked with us in the past to help collect unpaid grocery receipts. We've also been working with, uh, NIAA on this, so this is the final, finally came up with a settlement. And basically, the settlement infects ninety-one municipalities. And the monies that's been put aside, uh, will be released once all municipalities have signed off. And really, we don't stand to get an awful lot, our share is about fifteen hundred dollars. But we also stand to now, going forward, collecting grocery receipts on all those accounts that were being collected on before. So, I just need a motion to authorize me to go ahead and sign that.
Did we warn the Housing Authority? We had a motion and a second on the Housing Authority, did we warn them?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
I'm sorry.
Straighten me out?
I'm trying.
We had a motion and a second on Lawville Housing Authority contract. All in favor? How many in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. Now, back to the grocery receipts.
May I make the motion to allow you to sign the, uh, the agreement for the grocery receipts on, uh, the gas?
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, Kevin and Matt, uh, were up here a little over a week ago. And gave us a nice, uh, discussion on our water projects, and we had that. And at the municipal board meeting last night, you talked, I know Gaimo said they didn't think we needed to, uh, raise any of our rates right now. But after their meeting, we looked at this, and if you look at the back on the water rates, where it says yearly surplus deficit, well, we should be okay on that one. Our yearly surplus is going to be a little, almost eighty-four thousand. So, not too worried about that one at the moment. But if you look at the sewer overall fact sheet and then go to the back, our yearly surplus is only fifty-seven thousand. So, I talked with municipal board, our recommendation to this board is that, uh, for November, it's too late right now to raise any rates this year, but that we start the process and raise the sewer rate two and a half percent next November of twenty twenty-two. So, we just need to see if this board wants to agree and go along with that.
That would mean it has to be going into effect by, but it'd be the May billing cycle, so that we'd have like a, probably like an April?
They wouldn't be billed for it until November of-
Right, but the billing cycle would start, we have to, there's a early, like a six months-
Drop that dates to April to approve this.
That's why-
Yeah, it's got to be in place by May first.
Because we have a public hearing and everything. But that doesn't give you really much of a cushion if, say, you've got a blower motor goes out or something, you could spend thirty, thirty-five thousand on just one of those units. Two and a half percent will put us up probably hundred, hundred, ten thousand surplus.
I wasn't at the meeting, I had a game last night, not to say I, I'm not on the municipal board liaison, but, um, I attended one of these when I was first appointed and the spreadsheets and things like that, I attended, you were in one early on. They're, they're eye, it just, it makes it self-explanatory to a certain degree, it's, it's eye-opening to see how the numbers get broken down. Especially when we had all these projects that we had to do three, four years ago and project them, it was-
But if you guys, I guess what, also, I mean, if you want to crump these numbers a little closer, we don't need to make a motion to do that tonight, it could be done at next month's meeting. Whatever the board would prefer, as long as we get stuff done before May.
I think we should wait, I mean, I'm just curious where they come up with two and a half percent.
Well, we looked at five percent, five percent was quite high. And so, I said myself, I said, let's try two and a half percent, which would still give us a decent cushion and not, you know, put up. I guess where I'm coming from, Tim, is I don't want to put an undue burden on our residents, but we went so many years without raising anything, and now we've been spending quite a bit of money making these upgrades and things. We want to continue with our upgrades and things. We don't need our so-called fund balances and things to get depleted. And like I say, if we have a blower go up or something, it's very expensive to-
I think one of the, I guess, the financial or the budgeting or the whatever, like what Joe's saying as far as the burden on the taxpayer goes. I guess the debate's always, do you do it little by little every so often? So, that way, we don't have all of a sudden a ten to fifteen percent.
You're probably looking at-
They have to fill.
I was on that same meeting.
I think Kevin, Kevin brought it up, I think it's roughly, what, three dollars?
Yeah, I was just about to attempt to say that, Paul, yeah, for an average user, it's like three to five dollars with that, that two and a half increase, two and a half percent increase. And that's per year, they would pay extra right now.
Yeah, goes from one eighteen oh three to one twenty ninety-eight.
Kevin sent me the spreadsheets too, so I can send them to you and you can like plug in the rates to see how it'll mess with the surplus, so I can email them to you too.
Cause Kevin was doing that during the meeting, right? You were showing.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, cause that night, we changed numbers back and forth.
How much a year, did you say, Kevin, for the increase?
For an average resident, it's like three to five dollars extra that-
Per year?
Per year, that two and a half percent increase would be.
I don't know if there's a lot of debate over that.
So, you're basically looking at two and a half, two and a half cents per billing second.
That's, that's why it's, it's still going to get us and give us a decent cushion, but we're not going to put a heavy burden on our users.
And we, we were talking about this at the municipal board meeting too, and how low the, uh, the rates are here in Lawville, the lowest in the, in the area.
Our water was the second lowest, I think, I think it's behind Alex Bay. But our, our sewage rate was so much lower that we were still number one overall in the area. And you're right, we are the absolute lowest in the sewer rate. So. I, I guess, Tim, I don't know that, I don't have any problem approving three dollars for the average user.
No, I don't either, after you put that out there, you had this up two and a half percent raise report.
And I think, I think rather than wait, we can move on to other things and put this behind us.
Right. I agree.
I'll make the motion if we do that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Correspondents, Tub Hill Times, do we have any questions on that? Pretty self-explanatory. Rackle, October Newsletter, do you have anything you want to say on that, Mickey?
Uh, just say that we're not going to have a, a meeting here in October, I said, one on one, we'll have our next meeting, because of the LED lighting, I figure that's probably not. And I know there's also the community choice aggregation stuff that Lewis County's working on, and October twenty-eighth, they're having their kickoff meeting for that. We're at the JCC Extension Building, so with all that stuff going on, like, yeah, unless we got something pressing, uh, we probably won't meet until probably after the New Year here. Um, and given that, the only thing that might make us meet sooner would be, uh, town agreement has expressed interest in joining Raycock, and I believe they're voting at the next meeting, uh, whether they're going to move forward with that and, and join it. If so, then the board will have to meet to approve them being part of Raycock. Um, on that, you already covered the LED lighting, and yeah, November fourth or fifth is when you're looking at, hopefully getting started with that, and-
They did give you a date, no?
Yeah, they, they mentioned the November fourth, fourth or, or fifth, yeah, right around there is what they're hoping to have the construction start.
How long will they give you that date, Mickey?
Uh, six weeks to do all the lights for all the communities.
So, they're praying for good weather?
They figure, Danny, they figure one crew, weather permitting, one crew should be able to do twenty-five lights a day.
They got two crews, right?
Yeah, they have two crews.
What do we have, you, three hundreds and lots of?
We got about three hundred and ninety, we have three hundred and ninety-three holder lights. And then we have probably another dozen and a half of-
So, about fifteen days, or so.
Yeah, twenty-five, probably, yeah, a couple of weeks there. Yeah, and then you got Thanksgiving in there, you got Christmas in there too, so it'll be bumping out for, maybe later sometime in January or probably.
But they were, they were starting with Carthage, once Carthage is done, then-
Yeah, then they're going to write down the order of how people close, they're-
People that close.
Yeah, they're going to go by the date, close down, and that's how it'll go down. So, anybody who closed in October, they said should be able to meet for the shared service, grant funding and get that, so. Uh, and actually, I talked to Cassandra, she talked to DOS. I think we might be able to wiggle it so we can get everybody potentially in there done, so. So, we're still working on that. And that's pretty much all I got, unless you have any, any questions?
Got an email from Carl Golos, Lawville Fire Department. Uh, basically, uh, we need a motion to, uh, approve Patrick Paragon to the Lawville Fire Department's membership list. He also had Jacob Thomas on here, but we approved Jacob Thomas back in September, on our September fifteenth meeting, so he's already been approved. So, just, uh, we need to approve Patrick Paragon.
I made the motion to approve Patrick Paragon. Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, uh, on the back of that is, uh, information from EPA. Can actually close out the administrative order we had with them, they just want us to continue our regularly quarterly reports due to the heavy perspicipation we've had all summer long with the rains and whatnot. Cause they want us to have quarterly EPB results. On the back of the Fire Department one. Any questions on that? Okay, Lewis County, uh, resolution number two-five-eight, S twenty twenty-one. Basically, uh, refunding the tax money on the watershed of fifty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-one cents. And we thank you, Dick. We got to check this week?
I got an update on that, Joe, if you, if you want me to wait till public comment time, I can.
No, if you, go ahead, I just have, I mean, it's on there, so.
Yeah, it's exactly on there. We've been over the years returning that money to you folks. Years ago, there was a resolution where we weren't taxed in the first place, you didn't have to have to check in. At our committee meetings last night, we approved that same resolution again, so you will be tax exempt along with the other municipalities that are also in this water, that have their own water districts and stuff. The catch is the timing for that, I think you folks are on a March budget for taxes. Everything goes as planned, it'll be approved at the November meeting, and it should go into effect in twenty twenty-two. If for some reason it didn't get approved till December, it wouldn't go into effect till twenty twenty-three, but it will go into effect.
Thank you. We had correspondents from the Environmental Facilities Board basically approving, uh, our improvements for the phase two at the sewer plant. Did you see that, Kevin?
Yes.
Pretty straightforward. Does anybody, before we move on, have any comments on industrial water surcharge? If not, I would think we need a motion to close that public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We need a motion to go ahead and adopt the industrial water surcharge expected November first.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, adopted. Officer in committee in force, uh, village attorney, hey, hey? I had a couple of things, uh, been back and forth on a couple of things with Kevin Townsend, our insurance agent. Basically, appraisal was done on all our, uh, village property, our buildings and whatnot. Some went up a little bit, some went down a little bit. But in the end, uh, the village will be getting, will be large, but a small refund on our insurance premium because of readjusting, uh, the amounts on our buildings. And something for the board to think about, right now, everything we have is a thousand dollar deductible. And he's suggesting that if we feel we can take the hit, that like on our buildings and things, that maybe next year when our policy comes due, to raise that to twenty-five hundred dollar deductible. And he says it would probably save us maybe three thousand dollars a year on our premium. So, that's just something to think about, we've already renewed our policy this year, but for when it comes up again. Then the other thing I was talking with him about today, because we just, yesterday we just, uh, closed on our streetlights. We now have almost, with our decorative one, we have over four hundred streetlights out there that we're responsible for. And I think we should put them on our insurance policy. Say we get an ice storm or a heavy thunder lightning storm with a lot of wind that comes through and does something. And, uh, he said it's, he said, thought it would be a good idea also. Of course, the insurance agent would, but, uh, he said it's not really gonna be a problem because we already have a full inventory of all the streets, pole numbers and everything. So we just have to send in that information, but.
For the rate that it's gonna cost you, you definitely wanna be sure. If you had a microburst come through and you lost, what do you figure each light's worth?
Well, he said, uh, Sarnac Lake just got hit with the bad winds blowing it. They had a lot of damage up there to the village. But, uh, we're thinking that we probably want, because we put all those new switches and everything in, we'd want coverage of at least five hundred thousand on everything.
I agree.
And he said he would, you know, if the board wants to go ahead, he'd get, get back to me with a figure. But I think we'd be smart to do it. Just, we did have a microburst hit LaVle back in nineteen ninety-five.
I say, why don't we get some figures? I say, why don't we get some figures?
Okay, let's go ahead with that.
Yeah, we need to get on November eighteenth, and if some of the lights are off, we're definitely gonna wanna, my feeling is, uh, I think we should, we should make a motion tonight to bind that, uh, so that if they start on November fourth, we have coverage on the lights that are off. We can worry about the minimal cost afterwards, but if something crazy.
Well, we actually own them right now, so we need, you know, the coverage.
What do you think the cost of that would be then?
You were thinking a thousand dollars, right?
Yeah, and that might be, that might be on the low side. But for a half a million, I mean, incrementally, it's, I don't know. I'd have to look at our property rate right now and see what we're paying per thousand. To give you, we could, Danielle could do that in the morning, and we could pretty much get an act, actual figure. But I, if we own them now, we don't, we should have my, I, I make a motion that we put them on effective today or tomorrow morning, and then we can deal with the rate afterwards. We need to have that covered.
I agree.
It's an asset to the village.
Yeah, I mean, we've owned them since nine o'clock this morning.
I'll second your motion there.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that's all I got. Kirk Treasure, have anything?
Nope.
Chief of Police isn't here. Did, uh, do you have anything for him? Because I got some stuff.
He's got his report here, and he's also got the camera thing that he spoke about.
Did he give you the information on that?
He did, but you can go ahead.
I got it too. If you wanna.
I don't know a lot about it, other than he got an estimate on the cameras, right, for the buildings, inside and out.
Yeah. Well, basically, there was some talk a few months back for new cameras at the police department, because there's nothing outside. They just have them inside, which they have to have when they, they bring somebody in to arrange them or something. Uh, there was some damage to some vehicles outside one night, so there was big ones put on. So the price of, uh, basically would be, uh, eight cameras, be four new cameras inside, four new cameras outside. They're all high resolution, be able to pick things up at night. The total cost for installation, programming, everything, is four thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. Randy's looking for our blessing to let him go ahead. We can find the money and the budget to buy those. There's also gonna be four cameras that he has right now, that along with a video recorder he has right now, that we checked to see if they take them in trade. They don't want them in trade, but talking with Paul, we do have a use for them, where we could put them to use at DPW. The option he's talking down there, the extra eight hundred and thirty dollars, basically that's a switch so they can sit at their desk and turn them on and off. And he says we can walk a dozen faces down the hall. We don't need to have that extra.
And he did also say that the system that they have now is outdated. It's a DVR system, um, so they can't actually get close-up pictures of people, the pixels.
Plus, it wouldn't hold up in court.
It doesn't really comply with everything that I have at court.
Yeah, and we see, see whatever it is.
Yeah. Basically, they need to record everything when they bring a suspect through the front door.
Can I make a suggestion? Should we have Danielle look at different funding mechanisms that we may have? And I don't know that it's important. Do we make the decision tonight and maybe next month, uh, based on what she may or may not find, that we can go from there? Just a thought.
But it does, it does make sense, because I mean, we should find the money someplace because we, if you remember, we just spent three months ago, which wasn't budgeted, but we, luckily, we were able to find money for that new, uh, plate reader. And that was a pretty expensive piece of equipment. But he wanted, he's, he went home sick today. That's why he's not here. He might talk for himself, but he wanted us to bring it off.
Now we got a figure, so let's see if we can, so we have a figure, so let's see if we can.
Just round up the maximum. And the other thing, did he say anything to you about dog control?
Yeah, I didn't know if he wanted, brought it an hour later, and he's on here, but he has contacted two people, and two people have agreed to at least partially take the position on a part-time basis, I think. So two, two, we could make one. I think one of them would be interested in, in the full time, and the other one maybe a backup or something like that. Again, we gotta come up with some figures for the pay scale and whatever. Correct?
Right, yes. That is if the board.
Number of hours or what?
And, and I talked to Randy also today, and he said that this person would want a car. But in talking with him, I find, find out that Martinsburg already provides him one. So I'm thinking, why couldn't we work, uh, with an intermunicipal agreement? Because why would we need a, a car separate, you know, and work something out with Martinsburg, where they could share the car? It'd seem, it'd seem crazy to have two cars if Martinsburg's already providing it, and we share expenses to some degree.
Well, there's no way we could.
No.
Do a car.
No.
There's just no way.
No.
Puzzles.
But if there's already one there.
At this point.
If there's one there, we can work some, something out with them. You know, I mean, that, that would make sense.
Out there now, too.
I would think that if they're using it for any other municipality, hopefully Martinsburg's getting something from them too. Uh, you know, I don't know.
But we'll just talk with Randy then, and if he can work something out, bring it back to us for some numbers?
We need a, we need an animal.
No decision that has to be made on that one tonight.
No, but I, I, I feel we need an animal control officer. We've, we've batted around too long with, uh, with, uh, well, we had quite a bad situation five, four, five years ago. Not that dog, uh, control officer's gonna stop it, but we have him at our disposal.
Because I'm not saying these are all dogs. It could be other animals. But if you look at animals on his, uh, sheet, it's not really all that bad as far as complaints. So there may be some, but I just, I don't think it's, you know, right.
We don't have Morris Murphy around to catch the skunks anymore. There isn't many skunks here.
We'll talk to the chief when he's feeling better. Super Dennis, do you have anything?
Yep. Uh, fall cleanup has begun. Um, that includes leaves. A lot of people call me and say, I just put some leaves out just to let people know there is fourteen point nine miles in the village. And the way we do, we pick up is we start on one street, complete all fourteen point nine miles, and then we start again. So we're not hopping around because Joe Public put his leaves out that day. Um, and fall cleanup will continue as long as the weather stays good. Um, next week, our new fountain should be put in place by T F Wright. Hopefully, we'll have it up and going at least for a few weeks so people can see it. Um, I think it's gonna look really nice up in Monument Park. If you get a chance, go over to Veterans Park. We have completed, uh, stamped concrete to the monument that's out there. It looks really good. Um, I just found out late this afternoon that our, Joe and I had gone up to the, uh, Christmas tree farm and picked out a new Christmas tree for, uh, Monument Park, because the public wanted one back in there. So I just found out late this afternoon that, uh, All Seasons will be going up to get it tomorrow and planning it tomorrow. And that was all, yeah.
Under the leaves, uh, Paul?
Yes.
Just to reiterate to, it is illegal for people to blow leaves into the road.
Correct.
I just wanted that to be remembered.
And while you're on that, I forgot about this. We have our two areas down at the sewer treatment plant where people can bring their leaves and their brush. Um, that was open twenty-four, seven, seven days a week. Um, in the past several months, we've had people from out of village bringing, um, truckloads of trees, limbs, brushes. So we have restricted our hours there, um, until we can figure out a way to, uh, really monitor it. So the dump station out there will be open, uh, five days a week from seven to three thirty. I know it's an inconvenience for most people on Saturday not to be able to take it down there, but the amount of, uh, leaves, brush, trees that we get there has just been unreal this year. So, until we can get a grasp on it, it's gonna be closed during the weekends.
Can, uh, this is a question directed to the attorney. Can we develop some kind of a law, and if we have cameras, can we enforce non-residents, uh, from going there? This, you know, it, it just irritates me that this is, this is for our residents, and I was told that we had maybe a clerk in another community telling everybody to bring them over here to, to, uh, to dump them there. Well, that's just, that's just great because I personally like to use that on Saturdays. And, but I agree that until we figure out what we're doing, well, we can't do it. And so can we, can we develop a law, or is that gonna be something that, is that the wrong possibility?
Well, you, you can develop a law. It's an enforcement issue, right?
Right.
I mean, because now you're blocking the cameras there, and then somebody's gotta monitor the cameras, somebody's gonna have to trace the plates, so.
We do have existing cameras there that we can monitor people, but we have nothing we can do but tell them.
You know, if you put signs up that say that it's for village residents only, all others prosecuted, might deter a few people.
Can he be prosecuted for illegal dumping if they're from away?
Well, I think you might be able to do that. I mean, you'd need to have something in your law that gave you certease to, to do it. You have to have a fine system of some kind, correct? The fine system isn't the hard part. The hard part is who's going to enforce that? And what kind of resources do you have to put towards it?
Well, I guess, I guess we discussed this years ago, too. The only, only way we could, uh, have it open on a Saturday would be to, they may have to be down there for three or four hours every Saturday on a rotating basis. Which, I don't think Paul's men would probably cherish the idea too much. Maybe, maybe on a rotating basis they would, but.
I mean, it's no different than, we know towns that have a transfer site, you know, they're checking to make sure it's just their town residents that are using it. You know, they have somebody there checking these people.
I know a few years ago, Dan, we did have, when the bunks were in back, Saturday mornings, we were open till noon. And we had a guy there, but it turned out, at that time, one, two, three people at the most were showing up on a Saturday. It really was costing more to have him there than it was worth. And that's one thing that's happened with, with the brush being there. Years ago, it, it wasn't really a problem how much brush we took in because we just got a great big pile out back. And every two years, the Cogen plant was in operation up there in Lindsdale, and they wanted that. And they would come in every two years, chip it up and take it away. And right now, we haven't found anybody that wants it. And I think it was a year and a half, it's a year, year and a half ago, we basically hired a shredder to come in, and we spent over seven thousand dollars to, we still got a pile down there. We're, we're working on turning it into mulch. The guys, every so often go down with a loader and turn it over, but it's got to the point where it's costing the village money. So that's why we gotta watch what's coming in.
And I think, I think, Joe, probably you'll find more than three people using it on Saturday now, because back when it was new, now, you know, it's a nice, it's a nice thing to have. And in some ways, I think it helps our men, because a lot of people, instead of putting it out and waiting for our men to pick it up, like myself, I, I, I just haul it down with my tractor wagon, uh, so they don't have to pick mine up. So maybe what we're, we're gaining on one side, we're losing on the other.
Well, it is. It's nice to be able to take it down there because we go all the trouble of breaking it up. And then tomorrow, the wind comes up, you got, you don't wanna have to do it a second time.
Right.
All right, before we move on, there was one other thing I'm on the left, the board aware of. Uh, Double Play did our summer rec program. If anybody wants to see the rec program, there's a couple of these on the table here. But just, uh, on expenses, uh, basically, they came in six thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty-six cents under budget this year. So that money has been refunded to the village. We've got the check back. Uh, and the way this was broke down, we split some of it fifty-fifty with the town LaVle. So basically, we have to, all fairness, we have to refund half of that back to town LaVle. So, but just for everybody's, we did get refunded six thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and forty-six cents.
I did, when we did the vouchers, I didn't, and they approved these. I was, I didn't catch it at the time, but I noticed that too. So that's the, the half, the back to the town is the half that we get back to town, okay?
Because if you remember, the original budget this year, we were ten thousand nine hundred and some dollars over. And normally, it's a thirty-seventy split for the town, but talked with the town and they agreed that extra, almost eleven thousand, we split fifty-fifty. So that's why we need to split that fifty-fifty.
Yeah, and I could bring this up under recreation, but it'll, you can do that. But I, and I haven't talked directly to Danny about it, but I'm assuming partly that under budget was because of the somewhat restrictions. We didn't have as many kids.
Didn't have as many kids.
As the hours and stuff, so, yeah.
If you do the math, we had a hundred and twenty-seven kids. And roughly, I'm, if I did the math right, it's about forty bucks a kid for a summer rec program. I think that's, that's a really good deal.
Okay, capital, future planning?
Um, just something in general. Um, as you guys know, we are in the middle of our process for the comprehensive plan. I didn't actually make the last meeting. Um, but just kind of, I, my thoughts are, from a village aspect, I know we have some, we've had a lot of major capital projects, but for the department heads, and I'll reach out to Randy as well. Just give some thought to, you know, what you, what your goals are, future, um, aspirations are. I'm not asking for a crystal ball and a twenty, twenty-five million, but within the next five to maybe even ten. Just give it some thought, and we'll see if we can come up with a, our own little village.
Well, the comprehensive plan, I was at the last meeting. It's come together pretty decent. And I think they feel, uh, we should have a draft for the board. And then, of course, the county's gotta look at it too, uh, possibly by December.
Um, I guess I'll, no, is there been any other talk? I know for doing like comprehensive plan type stuff, it helps with grant funding, things like that. The, what's the timeframe again on that, uh, downtown revitalization grant? Is that?
Basically, where that stands is.
I was just curious.
In September.
Yeah.
Everything got submitted to, uh, Empire State Development. They got back to us, and we, it was, uh, October eighth, we did a PowerPoint presentation via Zoom with, uh, Empire State Development. And they had some questions on some of the projects that we had. And it went real well. Uh, and basically, now it's just a matter of setting back and see when they're gonna be awarded. And normally, normally the projects had to be in in May, and the awards were in December. But with COVID and everything, this year, things got pushed back, and awards didn't go in until September. So we're not really sure when they're gonna be awarded, whether it's gonna be the traditional December or if it's gonna be later.
December, January rang about, but I just wasn't sure about the timing of that. So that's really all that I have.
I think we had a very good presentation this year. It was a hundred and some pages. Of course, we also did a, a video. If anybody got a chance to see it, Tim was in it.
Last year, I think, was our first year and I thought we had a good one for, for not ever doing it before. I thought it was pretty good as well, so.
They, back in twenty nineteen, they had an awful lot of questions. And I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. This year, they only questioned a couple of the projects. And once we explained where the projects were going, they seemed fine for the, for some. But also, also in December, I mean, the village, we got, there's four other grants we're after out there. And hopefully we'll know in December. I mean, we got a tap grant, we got a green infrastructure grant, we got a water grant, sewer grant. They're all pretty good chunks of money. So I'm hoping the village will get some of that back also. Personnel, anything on that? I think we want executive session, I do believe.
Okay. Do you discuss the personnel?
Um, the audits are complete for the office through August. September's, we're not ready yet, so they're up to date as best as possible.
I believe the courts are done through July. I'm gonna ask Danielle if she can talk with the court clerk, see if I can get my hands on the stuff that they have moving forward so that I can audit them.
I don't see it on, before we move on to ladies, I don't see it on here, but. Last month, we appointed Amy Murphy as associate justice. And the plea that was deployed was to fulfill Ricky's term. While where the courts are gonna close at March thirty-first, the states come back and said, we need to redo that motion and make it effective March thirty-first instead of April sixth or seventh originally it was. So basically, I need a motion to.
That ended up being fine because we did a special meeting. The motion was through March thirty-first, but our paperwork, because we just copied over from Ricky's to keep the term the same, we just had to redo her oath today. So that's all situated and squared away with the state. So we're fine. We don't have to worry about the motion.
Okay. I thought, I thought our paperwork said that.
Yeah, originally I thought we had to. And then I went back and I listened to the recording from the special meeting and checked the minutes again. And the term was through March thirty-first, but her oath form, she said April sixth because that was Ricky's original term. Yeah.
Cause normally they get appointed when we do the reorganizational meeting every.
Yep. So I already sent out the letters today to get all that corrected, so that's fine.
Ladies, fire department?
Fire department. I attended a meeting in, in September. I don't have anything that needs to really be recorded. I'll ask the chief if he has anything he'd like to say.
All set.
Okay, that's it.
Police department, I think we went over everything unless you got something more?
One question I have on those cameras, could they be bought with the American Rescue Act funds?
Bingo.
That's what Dan asked me to. I'll find out about that.
Yeah, we talked about it. I forgot all about it until, it's now.
Well, I've been thinking that too, but I, there's certain things we can and can't.
One other thing, me and Randy actually talked about it today, but I could call you and could've told you that it would be at the meeting. I've had a couple of people talk about the backup in traffic with the crosswalk school.
I'll tell you what the problem is. Coming out of Davenport from eight in the morning to ten in the morning or nine-thirty, there should be no left turn. I take my grandson every day and all you gotta do is get one person to turn left and you've got a nightmare.
Well, I thought Randy was gonna.
Davenport, they'll swing around.
Oh, okay.
That's a real problem for, you drop the high school kids off, you come around. If you're making a right, it's okay, but the minute you get one person making a left, you got fifteen, twenty, twenty-five cars backed up. Because now you gotta be two sides of traffic instead of one.
See, what happens if you get a clear spot going north, you might have.
Yep.
A line headed south, so you can't go across. And I thought, I know Randy's been out there.
There's a couple of things we talked about to add to that was, and I witnessed it this morning because I come up to their town and it was back right up to the county.
That's every day.
I've seen, yeah, I've seen it, that same thing.
And then I slowly made my way up to basically park place. I turned around. Then when I came back in on Trinity, Trinity's backed up to the parking lot, you know what I'm saying? And Randy said that they've been looking at this and some of the reason is because people dropping their kids off at school on Trinity, basically are coming that way and continuing that way instead of like pulling in the parking lots and going back. So then these lights keep tripping each other. You know, people get out from Trinity, three, four cars in the trips. And the other guy can't go anywhere because the crosswalk's going across. And another thing I witnessed sitting there was, you know, you've got kids coming across, one kid, and the other one might be thirty yards behind him. So he continues to stop traffic for that period. Then here comes two more and then here comes two more.
I brought that up more times and I wanna bring it up.
I mean, should there be some kind of.
Gathered, gathered.
Could, could there be some kind of procedure where, you know, the crossing guard stops traffic or whatever? Or goes across the street, cause that's where they're all coming from.
I'm not discussing.
Waits there till you got eight kids and then crosses them across, you know what I mean? Instead of holding up traffic for every kid that's coming down the same.
Why don't I mention the same thing to Randy?
So he's gonna look at it.
You might be on to something years ago by having a crossing guard be on the other side of the street.
Well, that's just it. They're on the school side and every kid's coming from the other side.
It should be on the other side.
So if the kid's having, if the crossing guard's on the other side, where you stop eight kids and hold them there, and then you stop traffic, you should walk them across. Walk back across, you still would be.
And bring them across the turn. What's that, I think, I don't want.
I, I want the safety to be.
But I know a few years ago, this was back when Donna was here, we were all set to make that like from eight to nine in the morning.
The school was against it.
And then three-thirty, no left turn, and it got shot down.
The school was against it, but you know what?
Well, I think, I also think the state got, I don't think the state would allow either.
But the other thing that's happened this year too.
That's approximately.
I think you have more people driving their students to school because of COVID than we've had in the past because of the buses and everything being crowded.
I mean, it's okay, it's okay if people are patient, but you gotta get one person that's not patient and then we're gonna have problems.
Yeah, I think it's something we need to look at, like, yeah, monitor a little bit and see if we can come up with a better solution.
Randy wears out of that because I thought he was gonna try and bring up that no left turn again on those hours.
He didn't say nothing to me about that.
He and I talked, first week school opened on that.
I, I think, I think maybe we should talk with the state and superintendent and see if we can get them to buy. I, I, personally, I think that's the wrong, you gotta go.
The thing is on, on Trinity, and I witnessed this this morning, like I said, of the backup mark. He's saying that a lot of these cars are coming, because they've looked at it before, had, you know, officers sit there, people are dropping their kids off and then they continue out on the state street. Where if they're holding the parking lot and then I guess went back around and went back down Trinity the other way, that was all a lot of issues there too because.
What's it, what's that?
Yeah, buses didn't ever.
We started getting.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what's going on. I think we're.
I almost think the buses went back off front and they went a lot too. People just, so the people could come in the Trinity parking lot.
I believe I take my kids there all the time too. I don't believe they can pull into that parking lot.
Okay.
There's a gentleman standing right there because there's buses going in and out there too. They don't let the general public cars pull in.
No, cars can't go in the Trinity parking lot.
Nope, not going to.
So it might be like you said, Dan, more people are bringing their kids to school too and not riding the bus.
And when snow flies or whenever it's raining, it's worse.
Anyway, something we'll look into.
Municipal board, I don't think there's anybody got anything on that. We just, we dealt with the sewer increase that they wanna. Unless you have anything to, you heard, Joe?
No.
Anything out of town?
Go to the meeting in the morning.
County?
Yeah, a couple of things. As you, as you know, we got our rebate refund act. I'm working with Cassandra Beal. I've already sent the email to her for, to attempt to get grant funding again for next year for Music in the Park. Uh, I continue to hear people say they wanna see it again. And it went off pretty well. And before I forget, I would like to mention that, as we all know, this community lost a, a wonderful person, former deputy mayor for, for this village who served, did a lot, Brian Wester. And it's, it's a real, it's a real hurt. And I'd like to publicly acknowledge him at this meeting today. I'd like to have him open to silence, please.
Okay, recreation, I think we discussed that already also. Got something new?
I just, just to, I just wanna throw this out to add to Dan's. Brian was elected the same time I was in nineteen ninety-nine. Um, he was deputy mayor under Dan and I believe three of us served with him. Did you, Joe?
I served with him.
So three of the five of us. Just run back all that as well. Now, the recreation, we pretty much went over everything. Nothing else to really fill in from there.
Back over, Nikki, run over things. Bring this down to, nobody has any other business? We'll go to public comment.
Joel, I'm a legislature legislator, District Five. I don't see a string of law. Noticed in the paper that you folks are either setting up or have set up a meeting with Kraft to discuss the, some of the water issues that have been going on and been in the paper and what have you. I talked with Larry Gellhoff, our chairman, and Ryan, our county manager. And we would like to request, if you do have that meeting, we'd be more than willing to attend that. Direct me something under an economic development issue that where we could find you some money. We might even be able to support you or something. So if you would just take that under consideration and let us know at a later date. Okay?
Right at the moment. The meeting was set up and then when Brian passed.
That's why I said, that's why I said, at a later date, Joel, thanks a lot.
Do you mind if I just ask a quick clarification question? I see here under a new business that there's a two hundred and fifty dollar surcharge for Kraft for September. So was there already an industrial surcharge in place? Or was that for something else?
That's a sewer surcharge.
That's sewer, okay.
If they go, if they go over a certain amount in a month.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that's a water thing. Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? Carol?
My name is Carol Wicker. I'm a taxpayer, I live in the village of Lavo on Cascade Out. And I know that we've been having problems with the waters and everything else. I've lived in this village for over forty years and I've never seen so much problems. The thing is, is that I'm hearing from a lot of people that the village, it's like two-sided. Putting the blame on the village, the village is supposed to, five years ago, done something with the filtration and everything else. And then Kraft, when they came in, it's like when we let them add on and everything else, we didn't actually look into exactly what kind of hurt it was gonna happen to the village. As do, as the board, the village board and, uh, uh, so, oh, mayor, it's like people then look into the whole picture. And then, like I said, we're getting hurt. Now, I used to work at Nina Paper, I'm retired for a year. Where I, at my, at my place of work, they have got a water filtration. Does Kraft have one of them there? Because this helps out. It takes, our Nina Paper decided to do that to help out with the village, so we wouldn't be a burden either. Why can't Kraft do the same thing? I mean, it's costing, it was costing Nina, but actually Nina was helping out. So it wouldn't put a burden on, on the village. So why can't the, the board go and ask questions like them putting a filtration in, in there? To help? Because people are just gonna, it's like, come on. Me, where doesn't Kraft do everything or anything else and just bypass everything? Let me finish. I got five minutes. Please do not interrupt me because then you're gonna give me my time. Another thing is, for the five street project, hopefully we don't have any more problems. I've heard from a lot of people, especially when water and everything else, especially Trinity out, it gets to be like a lake. Hopefully with this five street project, things are resolved. And I don't want anything for the taxpayers, all of a sudden something happens and then we have to pay. Another thing is, where I live on Cascade Out, my neighbor at the corner of Cascade and, and Stowe Street, I'm retired. I like to, I'm getting, I like to enjoy. I'm walking and everything else. It's very dark there at night. And my neighbor has got two spots because of the trees there. The sidewalk is heaved really bad. And I don't wanna get hurt and I don't want nobody else to get hurt. Something's gotta be done with those sidewalks. Two places. And I wish, like I said, there's things that all of you on the board are not kinda looking around. Like I'm seeing a lot more for being retired and looking around the village to see what's going on. And I wish you all would look. And another thing is, is that I walk, I walk my, my mother's dog in the morning between five-thirty and five, and five-forty-five. I almost got killed. Three times. I'm lucky I'm here. And I know we don't have law enforcement on eleven to seven because we got people that are sick on medical and everything else. But the thing is, I was at the corner over there by the community bank. And I'm telling you, I, I had, I had composed myself. I had the right of way to walk. All of a sudden, this car come, this truck, excuse me, come and I had taken four steps. I had the dog. Luckily, I pulled back or I would've gotten hit. Another time in the same place again. Then another time, I can't believe this. It was just this couple of weeks ago. I went to take the dog to the groomers. And this is twelve-thirty in the morning, in the afternoon. This white vehicle, I'm crossing and this white vehicle like didn't even see me, was almost gonna hit me. I mean, I'm just, it's, I mean, I like to enjoy my retirement. I don't want nothing to happen to me or to anybody else. And I've already heard from other people too, because we've got a lot of walkers in the day and at night because of the, of, you know, getting dark and everything else. And people are walking in the wee hours of the morning, mostly at five-thirty. I've been seeing walkers and people runners. And I have, I have apparatus right here. I have, that I wear as I wear a vest. I have a light on my, on the dog. I even have a light on a visor and it's like they don't see me. And I'm just saying, maybe we gotta do like in some of the big places, the DOT has a, a camera that keeps track in case something actually ever happens. I don't wanna get killed and I don't want anybody else to get killed. I mean, I mean, when I got home, it's like, oh my God. And I, you know my husband, he couldn't believe this. And I know we don't have the manpower, the people power for, for law enforcement here in the village because we're down people. But oh my gosh. I mean, I wanna enjoy. And I'm just saying. And then at that time there, I was almost gonna stop and tell, you know, they're gonna be like road rage? I mean, come on. That's dangerous. I mean, either have cameras that stop to the state, cause I know other places that have, if there's a problem, they have that so they can catch, catch a culprit. It's ridiculous. I mean, come on, people. Like I said, a lot of you on there wanted to be on the board and everything else, but you need to walk, walk. Take a walk. Just don't be in your vehicles. I'm learning. I'm learning every day when I'm out there. And it's dangerous. It is dangerous and I've seen the walkers. Like I said, all you people wanted, wanted to be elected, you wanted to start listening to people. I wish you would. Cause I don't wanna be a statistic and I don't want anybody else to be a statistic. So you've gotta start listening because as a taxpayer, come on. And then also another thing is, is, okay, are you gonna really enforce for sidewalks to be cleared off in the winter? Because there's a whole lot of sidewalks that aren't. Where I live, when the village comes around that corner, it's gonna dump a lot of snow. And that lady that owns all that property down there, she don't clear it. And then you got the other one where the Jeep place is. That's blocked. So if you got laws, then enforce them. If you don't, then do away with them. So I'm just saying, I'm looking at all of you. Please, listen. Thank you.
Anybody else have any public comment? Guess we need a motion to go in executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Is it a favor to discuss personnel issues involving specific individuals?
Yes.
Hey, Joel.
All in favor then on that?